Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call the Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. It is Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty, for all. Okay, we do not have any condolences this evening, but I would like to just take a brief moment of silence for all those veterans and first responders who have passed. Okay, as a reminder, this meeting is being aired live and recorded. Pursuant to Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting of the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater will be fully remote and accessible to the public through remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meetings may do so via Zoom or Facebook Live. First item is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Any discussion on those? Okay, see, and then move for roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Russian?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven in favor, zero against.
Great. Moving on to announcements from the president, we have none. Next item is proclamations. We have none. Next item is citizens' open forum. Do we have any citizens here wishing to speak during citizens' open forum? Josh, I'm working off of an iPad. I don't see anybody.
I don't see anyone either.
Okay. Moving on, next item, e-appointments. We have none. Next item is hearings. We have none. Next item, license transactions. We have none. Next item, presentations. First presentation is Bristol Plymouth Tech School New Building Presentation. Do we have anyone here representing BP?
Good evening. Yes, my name is Chad Curtin and I'm with PMA Consultants, the owner's project manager for the project. I'm joined by Sean Burke and Mark Adrian from PMA. We also have Charlie Lyons, who's on as Bristol Plymouth Project Advisor, and the team from HMH, Tina Stanislavsky, Bobby Williams, the architects for the project. And I believe we have Nadine Rose, the school business manager. I am not sure if Superintendent Hagoheas has joined us just yet, but I'm sure he'll be joining shortly. Did I miss anybody?
He's having issues getting in. He just texted me, so I'm going to let him know that we're in. So he was saying that no one was letting him in, so I'm not sure if that's something on your end.
Okay, we'll check that and let him in.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Chad, were you gonna have any type of presentation that you want to screen share?
Yep, I agree. If that's okay, it says it's disabled on my end.
Josh is probably gonna let the superintendent in and then help you with the screen share.
Terrific, thank you.
I don't have anybody in the waiting room, just as a heads up.
Okay, excellent. Can you, Mont? Is that Josh?
Yep.
All right, excellent. Chad, the floor is yours. I'm gonna ask that you go through the presentation and then we'll open it up to questions for the council.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I appreciate everybody's time tonight. Can everybody see my screen? Okay?
Excellent. Yep.
All right, we are aware that Bridgewater is going through the MSBA and has been through the MSBA recently, so I'm not going to spend a ton of time on the process and the early stuff. I really just will try to catch you up on where we are in our process and then go up to any questions. So I'll move quickly through the beginning part of the presentation and then we can jump back to anything if anyone has any questions. So again, I am Chad Curtin, the owner's project manager. MSBA process, if you're familiar with it, the project in Bristol Plymouth is they're wrapping up the feasibility study. So schematic design was submitted to the school building authority in September. Last week, last Wednesday, we went in front of the MSBA Board of Directors and received their authorization to move forward and enter into a project funding agreement. So the next step for us is the local funding authorization, and then we move into detailed design and then into construction. A big picture timeline, that takes us right through the feasibility study, so we are right on the cusp of the first district approval, so the school committee will meet tomorrow night and make that first step towards local funding authorization, and then it turns over to each of the member communities. I can talk a bit more about that in detail as we get later into the presentation. I'll turn it over to Tina and Bobby with HMH, so they can talk a little bit about the challenges in the existing school and bring you up to speed on where we are in design.
Great, thank you, Chad. So like Chad said, I'm Tina Stanislavsky. I'm the principal in charge of the job from the architect's side. We wanted to just start by telling you a little bit about what's wrong with the current school and why we are here. The school was opened in the early 70s, and basically, you know, it's about 50 years old and buildings built about that time. That's about their useful timeframe. There's a lot of systems that need upgrades, repairs, replacement, HVAC roofs, windows, steel upgrades. When the building was built, there wasn't ADA codes, so there's some issues with accessibility. There are issues with fire protection, those sorts of things that, you know, they didn't put into buildings at that time. So just those kind of updates alone are gonna cost the district millions of dollars, and it really doesn't hit on the the real issue that we're facing there, which is square footage. So these are some of the photos of the existing school. I don't know who's had the opportunity to go through, but you can see that some of the finishes are failing, floors are cracking, there's handicapped accessibility issues with sinks. There's energy code issues, the doors and windows are leaky. There's some security issues with some of the programs being in outbuildings on the site now because they've run out of space. So the students have to go back and forth across the parking lot to get to those buildings. There's also some hazmat materials in the building, you know, buildings of this era, that's just what they did, so all of that needs to be removed. Go to the next slide. So, you know, that's all of the code issues that we have today to deal with, but really, this project's more about square footage. And basically, you know, they've done a great job kind of fitting everybody into the space that they have, but the building is really undersized. You know, the shops are really undersized, the sped classrooms are really undersized. So we have some diagrams that we'll run through so that you can see those in detail. Next. So Bobby, I'll turn to you.
Sure. So as Tina was saying, one of the first things we do is we really take an existing analysis of the space constraints of the existing school, and we use the formula the MSBA gives us. There are state guidelines for the academic space, and for Chapter 74 spaces, there's the ESE Chapter 74 Guidelines. So first, looking at the academics spaces, you see the green are classrooms. I'm sorry, not the green, but you can see there's classrooms, science classrooms, the cafeteria, the gymnasium, and we have them categorized with red, green, or yellow. Green represents the net square footage of the spaces within 10% of the MSBA space standards. Yellow is between 10 to 20% below the MSBA space template standards, and 20%, and red is 20% below the MSBA space standards. So you can see that almost none of the science classrooms meet the MSBA and state guidelines for what the size of the classroom should be. The cafeteria, gymnasium are undersized. A big part of this was the school was originally designed for around 670 kids, and they have around 1,300 students in the school right now. So space constraint is definitely one of the biggest challenges of this school. These are just some of the pictures of existing conditions, something to point out, whether the building was constructed, all the classrooms are in the center with zero access to exterior windows, so there's no natural daylight. Again, the gym is slightly undersized, that has an upper level that's inaccessible, which is some of those ADA challenges. The cafeteria significantly undersized, and then all those spaces, when you have a larger population than schools designed for, obviously, the library is also undersized. Taking that same formula and looking at strictly the vocational spaces. Again, anything that's in green, so you're looking at culinary, graphic design, plumbing, those are all within 10% of the ESE Chapter 74 Guidelines now, which gives you a specific square footage per student that they prescribe. The yellow, there's one which is metal fab, is between 10 to 20 square feet below the Chapter 74 Guidelines, and then the rest of the programs in the school are 20% or more below the ESE Chapter 74 Guidelines. So again, this is just to help illustrate the challenges schools facing. They've been doing a great job. One way they've accomplished this, they do have color ceilings, so you can see electrical, they were able to build up. So they were able to double the amount of students in the space by using the vertical space within, which is a great strategy. However, again, it's not accessible space, so there are accessibility concerns. The plumbing did similar things. You can see auto tech is, there's just a lot of equipment in these spaces. Carpentry being the need for safety and keeping students, you know, clearance away from planers and table saws is always an important thing. So if you go to the next slide, just a few more photos, you can see their CAD CAM, the amount of machines they're tucking into the space. A lot of these spaces will have up to 40 students at one time working in here, so you can imagine the stress the teachers are having, keeping these spaces safe. And move to the next slide, please. We also look at the site plan and look at site constraints that are affecting things. There are two main entrances, one off Route 140 and one up Hart Street. As you come in off Route 140, that is the main entrance right now. It takes you to the back of the building. That's also where the culinary restaurant is, which is the public facing and kind of a gem of the school where a lot of the public comes in to eat. However, it's right next to the service department. There's outbuildings that have security issues. As you go around to the front of the school, it's not visible from 140, so there's not a strong presence of the school right now. And then we have a lot of wetlands to work with, and the playfields are experiencing some flooding. So there are a lot of site challenges as well to this building project. Back to Tina.
Great. Are you guys able to hear me? Okay, I feel like I'm having like a little delay. I'm good. Okay. So, you know, all of that that Bobby just talked about, we want to make sure that you understand that, you know, we're going off of state guidelines, right? So we're not just planning this new school with spaces any size we want. They're basically the MSBA guidelines, which you, I'm sure, are familiar with if you've done a building program, and the DESE guidelines. So before we started, you know, figuring out, is it gonna be a new school, is it gonna be, you know, a renovation addition? We met with all of the leadership of the school, we met with the educators, the students, and we talked about goals for the new building. So you can see some of them listed here. They have a goal to create a school hub by centrally locating the library and the cafeteria. They really want a heart of the school where the students can feel like they have a home. They want to create vocational clusters, and they're listed here for you, so programs within those clusters work together and they have a synergy. So right now, they're kind of spread out all over the building, but in a newer renovated school, we would put them together. It's important that they create a pride and branding for the vocational programs. That's what brings in the students, so it's very important for them to be identified by their program. And they want to create a physical connection between the academic and the shops. You know, the students in the school sort of learn by doing, and so to bring that over to the academic side, to help them understand why they need things like math and science and why they're learning certain things is really important. So the new building would connect those types of spaces. Multiple things that we're working on in terms of goals when we think about what we want for a new building. So, next slide. So when we think about these things, you know, we start to create diagrams of how a renovated or a new school could come together, and these are some of the diagrams that we did, you know, grouping the clusters of spaces together, creating that heart for the school and then having the wings off of that. Let me go to the next slide. And again, we take all of that information about each of those programs and we compare it back to the MSBA sort of guidelines. And this is just a snippet of their space summaries, which is a huge, you know, spreadsheet. And it basically tells you, you know, how big their gym should be for this type of school, how big their auditorium should be. So we're sort of always going back and forth between this document and the planning. Next. And this is especially important when we look at the shops, because MSBA doesn't have sort of guidelines for those sort of spaces. Again, so we go back to DESE, and they tell us the minimum that it should be, so that it's safe. And then we go in and we do an inventory of all the equipment, we talk to the educators how they teach, and we start to lay out the spaces. So this is sort of a diagram of how we go about rightsizing those shops. Next. Okay, and so now we go and we look at the feasibility study, and I think, Bobby, you're gonna take it from here. Oh, you're on mute.
Thank you. So I just want to spend a little time talking about the exhaustive process in order to ensure that we're choosing the right option for the school. This is an application school, so there's a law, there's a large backlog of students that apply that don't get accepted because of the fact there's only 1,300 students. So the school like this, the MSBA allowed them to study three enrollment populations since the demand was there. The upper tier was 1,540, lower tier was existing at 1,300, and then the school chose a number in between, which is 1,434. So every option that we went through, we studied all three enrollment options. We always start with what's called a base repair option. This option essentially takes the existing school and just renovates it in place and says, what are all those upgrades that are required? Electrical, HVAC, fire protection. And we reconfigure the spaces to accommodate ADA, and everything is upgraded. However, there's no expansion. It's just, what happens if you were to keep putting 1,300 students into a 650-student school? What would that cost? That's the base repair that the MSBA requires you to study. We then looked at phased renovation options. We always have to see what parts of the existing school can we keep and add on to? So we did a really deep dive into the existing school and had two new additional wings off the back. This was about a seven-year phased renovation process, which would require two full grades of students to go through the school without actually experiencing an actual high school. They would be in a renovated, phased renovated high school the whole time they were there. So this was a very disruptive and very costly, because there was also a lot of swing space that was required, which for vocational spaces is really difficult, because you can't really create a metal fab shop in a trailer. So we looked at that for three different enrollment options. We then looked at the school and said, well, you do have kind of a standalone gym. Is there a way we could keep the gym and build a majority new, but keep that gym as a way to save on costs, and would this make more sense? So we studied that for all the different enrollment options, and then we studied new building construction on two different locations within the same site, and we checked to see what that would do. From all those options, I forget how many we did in total, but there was, you know, if you start adding up three times three times three, there's a significant amount. We came back and we started to evaluate them back against our original goals for the project, to see which how they lined up. So B was that phased renovation project. C was the adreno that kept the gym, and D was all new construction. So C and D were very close, that was 16 and 18, meeting those points. So we further studied the cost of these options to help determine what would be the best approach for the school, the surrounding communities. And I believe Chad is gonna talk a little bit more about the cost now and how those factor into our decision making.
Thanks, Bobby. Yeah, so during the feasibility study, we looked at a few dozen options. Once we had those options, we costed out each of the options that satisfied the district's educational programming needs with the intent of identifying the most advantageous solution and the most economical solution. So you can see here, the first submission that went to the MSBA, we eliminated the 15,400 enrollment figure, just sheer size of the building, cost, trying to keep cost down as low as possible. So we carried the 1,300 and the 1,434 solutions forward. As the MSBA, we carried the base repair and addition renovation and new construction option forward at the time, actually, two different new construction options through preliminary design. So that gets submitted to the MSBA and we receive the MSBA's feedback. That kicks us into the next phase, which is called preferred schematic. So this is the second of three submissions to the state authorities as part of this feasibility study. So here you see the preferred schematic option cost comparison, so carrying forward the preferred solutions from preliminary design program. And same exercise, we cost them all out. We have two independent estimators. The estimates are reconciled, the independent and then reconciled afterwards. And we look at the, not only the total project cost, but we also look at the district share, which is on the next slide, which is, of course, equally important. So the preferred solution, which was new construction, 1,434 enrollments, this builds it on the football field. At the time of preferred schematic, had a MSBA grant projection of $115 million and a district share estimate of just under $202 million. So this gets submitted to the MSBA, we get feedback from the MSBA board, and the task for our team turns to minimizing the cost to the district and maximizing the potential MSBA grant amount. And that's what happens during schematic design, and HMH will talk a little bit about that.
Okay, thank you, Chad. So in schematic design, we've now gotten MSBA approval on which option they think we should move forward, and they're giving us, you know, a good share of the the money towards this project, so they are approving us. And this phase is important because we have to develop the plans enough to get a really robust cost estimate done, because that is going to be the cost that the MSBA faces their project funding agreement on, and that's what we're locked into for the life of the project. So in this phase, we start looking at developing the site plan. And next slide. You can see here that we're putting the new building on the existing football field. We're gonna recreate the football field in front of the building along the highway. Where the fields are right now in the foreground, that's where the existing building is. So that would come down in Phase 2, after the new building's built, and the new fields would be put into its place. The parking area that you see closest to you, that's existing parking, so that will all remain in place. We were careful to try to keep as much of the roadway as we can and as much as the parking as we can to save costs. So next slide. So you can see that we're keeping the entrances, the Route 140 entrance and the Hart Street entrance. We are creating a loop road around the new school that will be for fire and safety. It will also provide access to the loading dock and service in the back and the outdoor workspaces for all of the shops that require loading and outdoor work areas. So, next slide. You can see some of the plans that we've developed to date. The different colors represent the different clusters that we were talking about, so you can see at the top of the page, we have the construction cluster, so that's carpentry, electrical, plumbing, HVAC. Again, those all have workyards, so they're gonna be facing the nice wooded area on the site, so they'll have a secure area back there to work in. We also have the autos back there. The purple are the programs that the public can come in and use facilities within the school, so we have culinary, cosmetology, graphics, and the childhood program. And then the green is the admin, and the yellow is the hub space that we are talking about. All of the orange spaces, that's the academic classrooms, and those are sort of rigged around the courtyard, which has got some great outdoor classroom space for the school to use. Next slide. The building is two stories. We're trying to maximize, you know, our use of the site. We're also trying to drive down costs, maybe making a two-story building. That reduces foundations and exterior enclosure. So you can see we've put the gym up on the second floor because it's one of the programs that doesn't need access from the ground level. A lot of the big shops do require that first floor access, so it was important that they be on the ground level. Next slide. So this is a sort of axonometric plan of the way the building is sort of shaping up right now. It is a very, very large building. It's almost double what they have. So we will be working to break down that sort of mass on the site. That we're using, you know, very contemporary materials with brick, those are gonna last, they're gonna be economical, durable. Next slide. And we've been looking at some of the exterior options. We have another year of design work to do, so that is something that we will be studying as we move forward. Next. And this will also be a lead building. We are getting additional reimbursement points from the MSBA to make it a green facility. So we look forward to working with the district on those two.
Thank you, Tina. So this chart here shows the evolution of the project cost as we progress through the MSBA's three submissions as part of the feasibility study. So preliminary design, this option locked in at $325 million. At the first schematic, it came down to $317 million. That's back design that was submitted and approved by the MSBA. It's $305 million. And then, again, equally as important is the district share of each of those. So on this chart here, the bottom darker half is the anticipated district share that would be split amongst the seven communities based upon their enrollment at the school. So preliminary design, we are at $203 million, preferred schematic $202 million, and then that schematic design, that pulled just shy of $180 million. And then the top half, you can see the MSBA contribution amount has increased quite a bit since preferred schematic, just through refinement of spaces and making sure that we really maximize the eligibility of every square foot of the building that's possible and reduce impacts on areas where we're up against the MSBA cost caps. So we're always looking at the other MSBA projects that are in the pipeline at the same time as this one. And during the preferred schematic, when this cost was presented, there were five MSBA projects at that board meeting. Bristol Plymouth was the lowest projected cost of the five on a construction cost per square foot basis. The construction cost per square foot on this one is around $580 square foot, which is it's a vocational school, so it's going to be a little bit still considerably less than Stonem and Medfield, which I do not think have vocational components. Boston's obviously a different market sector. And Northeast Metropolitan Regional Tech is quite a bit higher, and they're actually a very similar sized school with an nearly identical program. So stacking up against the other MSBA projects in the pipeline, we feel good about where the costs are for this project, and we look forward to trying to reduce those as much as possible as we work through the schematic design. So the next step, once we have the estimates of the MSBA buy-in, is to look at the project financing scenarios. So what you have here is a detailed project cash flow. We essentially cost load out the schedule with project completion. We're not only looking at what is spent on a month-by-month basis, but we're looking at the timing of the MSBA reimbursements and of what is being spent, what percentage of that is eligible for reimbursement. All critical components develop this cash flow forecast, which gives us an anticipated district out-of-pocket costs at any point in time, and we are able to work with districts' financial advisors for them to prepare their borrowing scenarios in a way that maximizes the benefit to each of the member communities. So this next slide here is the tax impact projection for each of the seven communities. So this is based on last year's enrollment in FY '21, average single-family homes. You can see Bridgewater, the second round there, in 2021, the average single-family home was $413,000. And we estimate that at today's borrowing rates and at 30-year level debt, the quarterly tax impact for Bridgewater and the average single-family home would be around $32 a quarter. Last couple slides, and then we can answer any questions. So project scheduling, funding authorization, we're there now. It starts really tomorrow night with the school committee meeting that will kick off all the timelines. Once the funding is in place, there's about a year of detailed design, and then we have a few months of procurement, and we're looking at a construction start date of spring 2023, and then occupancy in the fall of 2025. There would be a second phase, so the second phase would include abatement and demolition of the existing building, and then final site improvements for that existing building set. And that concludes our presentation. Realize that was a ton of information, but we're happy to answer any questions that might have. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Chad, Tina, and Bobby, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming in tonight and
Chad, Tina and Bobby, thank you very much. Uh, we appreciate you coming in tonight and giving us a brief overview of this project. I'm just going to open it up to the council if there's any questions. I'm just trying to get back to this screen so I can see everybody.
Yeah, we went through it kind of quickly. We didn't want to take, you know, an hour of your time tonight. So feel free to ask questions. We can go back to slides if that's helpful.
No, we appreciate that. Any questions from the council?
Matt?
Yes, sorry, I couldn't see it, Dennis. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, whoever wants to answer this is fine. Um, so is the percentage of payment from the communities equal or will each community have a certain percentage of what is not reimbursed by the state? How does that work?
Uh, it will be based upon the enrollment for each community, uh, yeah, at each given year when that year's borrowing payments become due.
And so, so that one of those last slides you showed didn't have, didn't really have what our cost would be. It just had some demographics about Bridgewater. Right?
Nope, that did. So that was um, working with the financial advisors. They, they took your current enrollment and of course it's subject to, to minor variation year by year. Um, but that was specific to your, your enrollment at the school, the thirty-two hundred and sixty-four.
I didn't, I didn't see an amount. Did I miss it? But what, based on this presentation, what is our share of the cost?
The total share? Or the tax impact share?
No, I don't care about tax impact. I'm, well, I do, but I, I look in at what, what is Bridgewater's share of the three hundred million dollars? That you'll be looking for us. That's what I'm looking at, trying to look at.
Let me pull the enrollment data. Nadine, I don't know if you have.
If I, if I understand it, Dennis, this uh, roughly thirteen hundred students in the school, uh, let's say eighty of them is the current enrollment. That eighty is based on a percentage of the hundred and fifteen million that's not funded by the MSCBA. Correct? That's how we're coming up with that figure.
Yeah, so maybe if thirteen hundred is around six percent of the total in the district there of that hundred and eighty million is the district share total. Uh, gives Bridgewater a share of around eleven million dollars.
Eleven, okay.
I can, um, I can answer some questions if, if, as far as the numbers for Bridgewater.
Well, I, I think I just, but well, I, I think I just heard eleven million. So that, that's kind of what I was trying to get at. Thank, but I appreciate it. Yeah.
It's twenty-nine million in totality with debt and interest. Bridgewater's estimated share is ten point five percent. That's based on the per pupil now.
And Nadine, what's the per pupil? Uh, how many pupils do we have currently in the school?
Currently you have, for fiscal year twenty-two, a hundred and forty-one students.
Okay, and over the life of the project, the finance and those numbers can fluctuate based on total population in the school?
Correct.
Okay.
Each year, whatever um, Bridgewater's enrollment is, is what the debt will be based on.
Okay, and I'm not sure who can answer the, well, actually, uh, Council Gallagher, do you have any additional questions?
I'm all set for, I'm all set for now. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Council Wood.
Thank you. Uh, good presentation. Um, so this is, this is just uh, the equivalent of debt exclusion has nothing to do with the annual assessment on the, that hundred and thirty students, et cetera.
Uh, so the, that's a decision that's up to each community. Our, our expectation is that, yeah, it would be funded through a debt exclusion, but um, every community can make that decision on, on how they want to fund.
Right, but I mean, it, it, there's annually, there's still going to be two parts. One to pay for the, the building and one for uh, student assessment.
Correct.
Alright, and, and you answered my other question, which was currently we're at a hundred and thirties, a hundred and thirty students, I think you said?
Hundred and forty-one.
One forty-one.
Forty-one, one forty-one. So uh, it doesn't sound like there's much planned growth here if there's, if the current building's holding thirteen hundred and you're just targeting, what was it, fourteen sixty-five or something like that? Uh, do, do you anticipate that number holding for quite a few years or how is that number derived?
Is it Alex here? Yeah, sure. Hi guys, uh, Alex Magali Superintendent. Sorry, I came late to the uh, presentation. Uh, we, we came, we came up with that number um, uh, be- because of the uh, the enrollment numbers that we've been getting and in the applications. We didn't want to go over too much because again, uh, you know, the price of the building was, was a little much too high, but I, I, I would think that this will kind of stay. Just so you're aware, we have another town that wants to get in, in uh, in on our regional agreement. In fact, we're working with it, which is Free Town. And if everything stays status quo, we kind of see the town's pretty much, uh, you know, kind of level where you are. The plus minus of students as you normally do every year, but we're, we're equating that, the hundred increase would most, most likely populate with Free Town students in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer?
Any other councils for any, any other questions or comments?
And just an F R I, you, you may be getting some time next month or the month after, um, uh, some sort of um, I noticed that uh, Free Town would like to join uh, the region. So uh, we'll probably be at, and most likely be asking for a vote to accept them into the uh, the visual agreement and uh, um, hopefully they, they get a positive result.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Uh, Mr. President, I could, Derek?
Yep, go ahead, Council Moore.
Thank you. So um, maybe just to confirm or maybe build a little bit off of Council Wood's question. So if I'm understanding the numbers correctly, right now there's about thirteen hundred students. In the new school, there would be fourteen sixty-five. So I think we're saying with all of the construction, we add the ability to add a hundred and fifty additional students. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then I'm just thinking about the life expectation of the building. So if we look at the first building, the student population doubled. Uh, and it lasted fifty years. We're investing a lot in the second building and we're only planning growth of a hundred and fifty students. I was wondering if maybe you could sort of like take me out into the future a little bit. And twenty years from now, you know, kind of what are we looking at for population? Is the building built to support changes in the programs? Maybe just talk a little bit about the future of, of the building and maybe the life expectancy of the new building.
Well, according to MSBA, the, the life of the building has to exceed fifty-plus years. And this one, uh, this building's at fifty now. Uh, as far as growth, uh, every year we look at what shops. I can't predict what kind of shops. I'll be honest with you. We never thought we'd have robotics in, in, or engineering in, in these vocational schools. So every year we evaluate the uh, the um, type of, of uh, occupations that are out there. So it is possible that, you know, maybe we lose automotive because now we have electric cars and so things will evolve and sometimes those spaces can either uh, decrease or ma- might have to increase depending on the uh, you know, equipment. And if that's the case, you know, those are things that kind of drive uh, the enrollment at times. Uh, I, I, there are weight means of, you know, increasing enrollment. It's possible because the way we do it now, uh, you know, we cut every little corner. Uh, there's a lot of movement. The, the building that we are in currently at one time, um, uh, as you may be aware that the academics was not a, uh, you know, uh, necessity per se. Because with three quarters of the times, there's uh, we're meeting vocational uh, programs. In this building today, we only have two, technically two um, science labs. One was biology, one is chemistry. That's the way it was designed in the nineteen seventies. Well, you know, these buildings, so it's hard to tell what the, you know, what the future would hold, but right now, uh, I, I think, uh, you know, to say where we are with the academics, I think it would stay where it is. Is it possible to increase enrollment? It is possible. Um, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to be there fifty years. I'll tell you that much, but uh, but uh, you know, there is some room to, uh, you know, if uh, a program needs to be um, you know, downsized and, and increase another one, it's, it's possible to do that. We wanted a building that would be flexible, knowing that a lot of changes are, are being made. And I think, uh, the architects did a pretty good job of, of uh, you know, doing that with some of these shops.
Yeah, I mean, I could add to that just a little bit. You know, if you think about like, uh, Dr. Magalas was saying, if we take out the auto program and we transform that to some program in the future that we don't even know yet, maybe it's you know, engineering related. Think of how many students you could put in that automotive shop, which, you know, is huge. It only holds twenty students right now, right? Because of all the equipment that's in there. So I think there's lots of ways that we can, you know, build in flexibility in the building. We can make the materials easy to take down and put back up in different configurations. We can design the HVAC system to be flexible and partitioned. You know, we can design the electrical system so that we can easily, you know, change out light fixtures. Uh, so those sorts of things that we're thinking about. Um, the other thing we're doing too is we're putting in ground improvements on the site before we build the building. So we will put those in areas right next to the building so that you could actually put an addition on fairly easily in the future. So we're thinking about those, you know, potential things that might happen in the future.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from the council? Um, on an iPad, can't see everyone, so speak up if you wish to say something. Okay, I'm not seeing or hearing anybody. I would sort of echo some of the comments that have already been made. I, I am concerned about future flexibility of the building as trades come uh, in, 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 in new ones that developed, especially with technologies, you pointing out with robotics, um, that space doesn't exist in the current school. I'm a strong supporter of it. I, I think that you will continue to see an increase in the trades. I think it's so important to be offering this to our own community, but all of the communities that participate in Southeastern Mass and this school. I would say that my only concern is um, in terms of what we're looking at, in terms of supply chain and labor. How confident you, are you in the current numbers that you're providing? I, I feel like the potentially low and going to escalate fairly quickly and how do we keep control of that?
That's a great question. So um, yes, I absolutely understand the supply chain concerns. This is uh, project is a little bit unique in that we did a fifty percent schematic design estimate. We are halfway through schematic design springtime of this year. So just to get another check on which direction the market was heading in, uh, we had designed, yeah, their, their design details and touches and materials. In order to make sure that we stay within budget, um, that was a, that was a major step. At this point with the MSBA, when that submission went in in September, we are locked in at that full project budget cost. So if material costs do increase, uh, one, there's design embracing and escalation numbers carried within the estimate. All are covered by the estimators. So their fingers are really in the pulse of the market. Um, the other major consideration being if the, the material costs increase and the project needs to be uh, undergo a value management exercise in order to pull it back down within budget, that's something that the committee is prepared to do. We, we know that we are, we are locked in at this budget.
Excellent. Thank you. I, I appreciate again you, all of you, uh, spending the time to come in and, and give the town of Bridgewater an update on uh, this really exciting project, uh, with a new trade school. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Alright. Bye.
Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is the town manager's report. First item is the Mitchell School update.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a pretty quick uh, update this evening. The Mitchell School, uh, work continues as planned. Um, knock on wood, uh, going smoothly thus far. Uh, gas service will be installed, uh, and a binder course of paving, uh, is scheduled before the asphalt plants close uh, for the winter season and uh, we had a very minor uh, delay. Well, their, their potential minor delay at the entrance uh, with a telephone pole that needs to be removed. That work is uh, only done by Verizon and the work order is in, but uh, our experience, if you recall, on Elm Street uh, with Verizon is less than stellar. So, so uh, I don't, don't believe that will hold up the project significantly, but it may hold up the uh, installation of some drainage that location. Uh, overall, the timeline is still on proj- uh, projected completion date, uh, July twenty twenty-two. And uh, those interested in more information, Monday, November eighth at six thirty is the next uh, school building committee meeting again, Monday, uh, November eighth at six thirty via Zoom. And BridgewaterSchoolProject.com has uh, all the pictures, uh, minutes, information and so forth that anybody could want. So uh, happy to answer questions on that.
Any questions from the council? Okay, see, and none. Next item is COVID nineteen update.
And COVID, our, our numbers are steady. We now have twenty-one uh, reported cases, sixteen adults, five children, um, and our vaccination rate is also steady at fifty-seven percent of Bridgewater residents being fully vaccinated and sixty-two percent having at least one uh, one shot. But happy to answer questions about that.
Any questions or comments from the council? I, I just had one, Michael, just in terms of what I'm seeing in the paper, um, in terms of private employers and state employment, uh, mandating the vaccine. What's our position as a town? Has there been guidance given to employees? Do we have any sense of town employees, whether or not they've been vaccinated or not?
Uh, inform, we have not uh, done a formal uh, assessment, but I can tell you informally, uh, almost all employees have been vaccinated. We have, I would say a very high um, vaccination rate, much higher than um, you know, the community certainly. We do have some that uh, we know of, uh, that aren't vaccinated and um, we continue to ask employees to just take precautions. We don't at this stage anticipate um, implementing a mandate. But uh, but if we sense that uh, the community cases uh, or cases within town are getting worse, uh, we would go back and address that, but we don't anticipate uh, issuing a mandate at this point.
Okay, excellent. Just to follow up. So those that aren't vaccinated, we are working with them as employees to accommodate them and their employment status.
Correct.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Moving on, um, see Main Street and Broad Street grant improvements.
Uh, I think as the council knows, uh, we had secured or have secured a four hundred thousand dollar grant, reimbursement grant from the state's uh, complete streets program for improvements on Main Street, both Main Street and Broad Street. Um, mostly uh, minor improvements, uh, including several bump outs on Broad Street. Um, sidewalk, uh, wheelchair ramps at intersections and uh, line repainting and so forth. Um, that work is scheduled for uh, early spring. Um, and that will take place uh, and be concluded by July first. Um, we did just one note. We had, uh, we've had some additional engineering to do where uh, elevations between the sidewalk uh, and the road were too steep for, for proper access, uh, or universal access. So we've had a little excuse me, a little engineering to do. Um, and now uh, quite honestly, post uh, post-storm, uh, we, we have additional sidewalks to address. Um, but that, that uh, some of that sidewalk work actually was anticipated. So we, we, in addition to doing this work contemplated by the grant in uh, in this early spring, we'll also be addressing uh, some sidewalk improvements um, on both Broad Street and South Street. So, so that's uh, that's what I have uh, for that, but I'm certainly happy to answer questions.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from the council?
Mr. President?
Council George.
Thank you. Uh, through you to the town manager. Um, so the, probably not a discussion for today, but a- as you referenced the storm, um, we've had this discussion a while ago, like to revisit it in the near future around the tree clear, clearing procedure evaluation uh, with national grid. Now, understanding that uh, entire trees being uprooted uh, is a, is a, you know, definite issue, but driving around my precinct, looking at some of the damage. Um, this, this seems to be a lot of damage with downed power lines that had to do with limbs and, and branches being, you know, really close to the power lines and bringing them down. And I know that, you know, we've had issues with Walnut Street, now with Cherry Street, um, and more so trying to work with Street, and more so trying to work with National Grid to be proactive in not only taking care of what needs to get, what needed to get fixed now, but in the future, trying to avoid the major problems on normal occasions. Again, a nor'easter being a little bit of a of a different thing. But we, I know that having conversations with residents and myself that I can't remember the position's name at National Grid, but having conversations with that position around tree pruning and trimming seems to have a little bit of a different take on what I'm looking at versus what they're looking at. So just like to have a conversation around that because we've we've got some town, you know, we've got some residents that were out of power for four days. And again, some of it is just pure mother nature. I think some of it potentially could have been avoided if they did have more of a proactive tree trimming, pruning, things of that nature.
That's counsel. That's a point very well taken. And and we actually had a debrief, you know, post, post event debrief session yesterday. And one of the items that that we kind of zeroed in on is is or an area of improvement is specifically National Grid's maintenance of of trees and along the lines and and also, you know, sort of the communication flow during the the event and and immediately after the event. And not that it was necessarily bad. I'm talking about the communication piece, not that it was bad, but I think there's some, some, excuse me, some ways that we can improve that line of communication and be help National Grid be more responsive to the outages. But but certainly, our conversation with National Grid will zero in on, you know, tree cutting, maintenance, continuous tree cutting maintenance, and then also the immediate post event communication. So those those two areas.
Okay, I would just say on behalf of Counsel George, once an after action reports completed or some changes in their procedures, maybe you could just provide an update to the council. So we'll know what's what has changed post storm. Counsel Sousa?
Yes. My neighborhood lost power for four days.
All right, hold on a second. Hold on. This is not on the agenda. It already went beyond what I wanted to. We can follow that up at another time. It's just not on the town manager's report. If you want a full update, just request one for the next meeting. Okay, the only thing I would ask on the Main Street, Broad Street improvements, if we could, in the grant or through funding, if it's possible, I think I look at the project as a as a much needed improvement downtown. But I also think that it could have an impact on the businesses that are still surviving downtown. It would be nice some way, and I'm thinking it more in my mind as a marketing campaign, but some way, once the project's completed, to highlight that in some way, whether it's paid for advertising on Facebook, whether it's updates to the website. I think we need to showcase those improvements, particularly around ADA compliance and accessibility downtown, because I think that there could be people who have stayed away from downtown, but given those improvements might return some of those businesses downtown. So I just don't want that to be missed. We do this huge project and then it's just not realized for some people that may have stayed away from downtown. That was my only comment. Is there any other comments from the council on the Main Street, Broad Street grant improvements? Counsel Columbotus?
Yeah, I just had a question for the town manager. I'm wondering, given that we have an impending large project on Broad Street, I wonder if we might, if there would be any way to to delay the expenditure of some funds to better coordinate with that project when it ever does come along. I can see us kind of making improvements on Broad Street and them not being compatible with what they've got planned for that big project when that does happen. So is there some deadline for the use of the funds?
So correct, counselor. There's a deadline of July first, 2022. But but if in the event that 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 project were to progress, and there were improvements that we could do in conjunction with that project, then certainly we would reach out to the Complete Streets Program and request continuance. And I I don't know that that is very difficult to get at this point. So so but we would have to be proactive about doing that.
Yeah, it would only seem to make sense to coordinate the use of these funds with any project that happens down there.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counsel Wood?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd ask for this update. One of the things, as the president said, if if there's a way to highlight what's going on, the timetables, you know, maybe a single slide presentation that people could see what the affected areas are going to be, it'd be easier to communicate that. I had a number of people reach out. We didn't even know that the town had gotten a grant, even though that this group had talked about it a couple of times. And while I do agree with Counselor Columbotus, I think we need to move forward on Broad Street. You know, there's a lot of businesses down there. And if you recall, the jeweler appeared before us, I don't know, maybe it was two or three Decembers ago at this point, and commented on the the availability of crosswalks from the municipal lot over to his shop. And there's there's none. There's one way up high by the liquor store, and there's one further down by the old bowling alley. And I think that these improvements, regardless of that large project, are needed. And we have, it's not like we're using, you know, it's a grant. So let's use the money. Let's improve the roads. And maybe good things will happen on Broad Street in other areas as well. So I just encourage you to keep communicating the progress and moving forward on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions to town manager? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to discussions. We have none.
So Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes, a request from the town manager through you. We would like to know why the veterans agent who holds a full time position is only working part time. And people who have said they were going to his office and no one's there, they phone call, not getting calls back. We would like the town manager to explain why that position was reduced to part time. And if it's still a full time, what's he doing to fill that position? The veterans in this town deserve it and they need it. And it's a full time position.
If if I may interject, that may be something that's appropriate for you to have a discussion with the town manager on. But under the charter, there is no intermediating or meddling between the council and the town manager relative to his employment or how he employs individuals. So maybe that's a conversation you can certainly have with him. But I don't think that should be a discussion item. I think it would be in violation of the charter.
Thank you, Attorney Rawlins. Moving on to committee reports. Are there any committees that want to report on the other activities? Okay, seeing none. Move to legislation for action. First item here is ordinance D F Y twenty one dash zero one one, General Ordinance Amendment Article Two, Section two dash one of the town charter. The town council voted to continue at their meeting held on ten nineteen twenty twenty one. This measure may not be considered this evening as it requires advertising. However, I just would would entertain a motion to send it back to rules and procedures. We do have an ordinance coming up under new business that will require amendments to this current general ordinance F Y twenty one dash zero one one. So entertain a motion, send it back to rules and procedures for amendments.
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Roll move for a roll call vote.
To Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Moving on. Item B, ordinance D F Y twenty one dash zero one two, General Ordinance Admin Code Change Part Two, Chapter One, Article Two, Section Two. The town council voted to continue D F Y twenty one dash zero one two at their meeting held on ten nineteen twenty twenty one. This measure may not be considered this evening as it requires advertising. Again, it's in the same position as I just described on the previous ordinance, entertain a motion, send it back to rules and procedures for amendments.
So moved.
Have a second. Okay, any discussion?
Discussion.
Counsel Gallagher?
What could you consume? What would the change need to be on this ordinance?
Specifically, I think that we just have to ensure that ordinance twenty one eleven twelve and anticipating ordinance twenty two dash zero one five all have this similar language. I did talk to, and I could defer to Attorney Rawlins for specifics, but I think it would be best for us to send it back to rules and procedures in case there's any changes to be made.
Yeah, I think I could. Tonight. I could certainly weigh in if you want me to. So basically, I think we have to make sure we work all these in concert so they all fit with what you all have decided makes the most sense. So there is pending now a some legislation that's on for new business tonight that I helped draft with Counselor Chase and Counselor Rushton, that I think outlines what you all had discussed at your workshop, whereby there would be nine precincts based on the map that hopefully gets voted tonight, and we can start working to get that approved by the state. And based on those nine precincts, it would be broken down into also three district counselors and six at large. So I just want to make sure that we pair everything up to that. Once that map is voted and approved, it seems to me that this, the admin code amendment would just need to be changed to mirror that. I think the way it reads now is there shall be nine members of the Bridgewater Town Council, one council elected from each district, and the remaining elected at large. That that doesn't necessarily contradict what we're looking to do, or you all are looking to do. But I think we want to be specific and just explain and have it almost mirror what we're going to do for a charter change. That way you can outline, okay, these are the nine precincts, append the map to the charter, say these are going to be the three districts, whatever you guys decide those three districts are made up of. And then there's going to be six at large. So I think we're just looking to to match everything up so that it all goes to legislature at one time. The only the only other thing I would I would note is you guys probably want to be discussing, and I don't know if you want to do it by way of workshop or have someone bring legislation, the transition, what that transition looks like, what it looks like for the election, how, what terms, maybe those initial at large and or district counselors are going to serve. And then maybe have a transition amendment made to the charter as well, much like we did the first time around. There's, there's a section ten that deals with these transitions. So that was the only other thing that I had mentioned in discussions that you may want to start thinking about, because we probably want to have a nice, smooth. This is what the process is going to look like. This is what the initial at large counselors from, you know, are going to serve. These are what the initial district counselors are going to serve. And then from that point thereon, they'll serve in three year terms, staggered however you guys want, or how many ever, whatever you feel like. But I think we just want to make sure it all works in concert. So you're not necessarily wrong, Counselor Gallagher. I don't think it's necessarily different. But I think we want it to all work in concert.
True.
I do think we need to keep in mind that the charter is one thing, and the administrative code is another another thing. That's what needs to be in sync. The charter needs to sort of mirror what the admin code says. And that's.
Yeah, I agree with you. Actually, vice versa, though. I think the admin code needs to mirror the charter.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. That's right.
Counsel what?
Actually, through you to the town attorney. So with respect to the, if we get to three district, three district representatives, and we want to stagger their their terms, if there's three different areas, would it be the responsibility of us to articulate how that would be? Or would it be the town clerk to kind of pick out the hat, which which district gets one, two, and three years?
No, I think you guys would decide that. I don't think the town clerk, first, I don't think the town clerk wants to make that decision. But also, I don't, I don't think the town clerk has the authority to. I think it's up to the legislative body and then approved by the state legislature. I think that's the only way to really do that.
Yeah, and I think if I I could just, I think that the most prudent and safe thing to do right now is to send this ordinance back to rules and procedures while we work on new legislation and rules and procedures. And as the attorney Rawlins mentioned, we will have a transition workshop where we can work all this out and have this conversation. And then we'll come back with a plan, just like we did in the next ordinance under new business. Is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second.
The only other thing I would add is in that workshop, if what we come out of it is much like this last one, whoever would like to sponsor it is fine. Send me kind of a draft like we did this time around. Say this is what we're thinking, whoever the sponsor is and whatever the sponsor is thinking. And then I can mold it to fit that. And we can have in there those transition things and the specific changes we want to see in that. I believe it's section two, one of the charter and section two, one of the admin code as well. But I just, I want to make sure we keep that moving in that way. I think that worked really well for this last one. So whoever wants to sponsor it is great. That that worked out well.
I appreciate that. And I think that through the workshop, we can figure that out, at least in my thought processes, rules and procedures, subcommittee members are already working pretty diligently and have enough to do. So as with this last example, myself and Counsel Chase and anyone else will identify in the workshop, who's going to draft that legislation and get a draft to you so that it's smooth.
Perfect. And just like last time I'm here, you know, just obviously email me. I'm accessible so I can talk to whoever's working on it like you all did this last time.
Thank you very much. With that, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Moving on, item C, ordinance D F Y twenty two dash zero one four, adoption of precinct map. This ordinance has been advertised and may finally be voted on. Motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Move for roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
So I would just add that that's great. That's a terrific first step. I'm sure Ms. Hunt is overjoyed that that map is voted. And I would just suggest if Ms. Hunt, obviously, if you need anything from me getting that to the LED RC, just let me know. But I think that's, that's great that that moved along.
Thank you very much. Next item, item D, order zero F Y twenty two dash zero one six, capital appropriation, Memorial Building. The Budget and Finance Committee and the Finance Committee met on eleven one twenty twenty one. They voted three and O and six and O in favor. And okay, and so entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Moving on, item E, order zero F Y twenty two dash zero one seven, transfer order, Old Scotland Links Golf Course Pump. The Budget and Finance Committee and Finance Committee met on eleven one twenty twenty one. They voted three and O and six and O to recommend approval. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
A discussion. Seeing none. Move for roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
Moving on, item, item F order zero F Y twenty two dash zero one eight Plymouth American Rescue Plan Act vote, the Budget and Finance Committee and Finance Committee met on eleven one twenty twenty one. They voted three and O or in six and O respectively to recommend entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? See, and none move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
Next item is M old business. We have none. N new business. First item, A resolution, R F Y twenty two dash zero zero four, resolution for Oak Street Bridge Repair. I'll defer to Counselor Wood.
Thank you. Um, as we know, the Oak Street Bridge has been out for quite some time now since the accident. I think it's been three, four years anyway. And um, oh, the neighborhood um, uh, has, has commented on the fact that it's it's difficult to cross the bridge when there's traffic, uh, even though there's stop signs. A lot of people don't pay attention to stop signs. It's one way, et cetera. Um, we, we, I don't think we've ever denied the fact that we want to construct this, reconstruct the bridge. It's just that uh, there's never been really capital funds available to do so. And the amount from the, the state and the insurance company uh, just don't cover it. So, so this is a, a resolution, uh, started out as a transfer, but uh, we'll go with a resolution. Um, there's, there's no balance in the capital planning uh, available to, to at least uh, so it's a some repairs. Um, and it encourages the town manager to look for additional funds to finally get that bridge repaired. In this, in this time when everyone's talking about infrastructure, it's time to get this bridge repaired. So hopefully this is the first step. And I suggest to go to, to budget finance. It's really a numbers game at this point.
Motion to refer to uh, finance and uh, budget and finance.
Have a second?
Second, second.
Any discussion? Okay, see, and none move for roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
Next item B order zero F Y twenty two dash zero twenty one acceptance of MRS grant police. Let's defer to the town manager.
Uh, Mr. President, this is a grant applied for by the police department, uh, one of a number of grants that the police department usually gets on a regular basis. So I would encourage you to refer this to uh, budget and finance and finance committee.
If we have a motion? Okay.
Motion to.
Thank you.
Motion to refer to budget and budget and finance committees.
Second? Any question, any discussion? See, and none move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
Item C order zero F Y twenty two dash zero two two acceptance of DMH Grant Police Town Manager.
Mr. President, this is another uh, grant uh, application filed by the police department. Uh, it uh, funds a mental health um, officer that uh, that goes out with the police department uh, on calls uh, where appropriate. So again, I encourage referral to budget and finance and finance.
Motion to refer to the budget and budget and finance committees.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? See, and none, uh, move for roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
Okay, moving on, item D order zero F Y twenty two dash zero two three acceptance of a grant for COA, defer to the town manager.
Mr. President, this grant uh, was applied for by the Council on Aging Director, Elder Affairs Director, and uh, is for the purpose of uh, purchasing a dedicated bench um, as a chat bench, which is uh, when you sit there, you may have noticed little sign on one of the benches, temporary sign on one of the benches in front of uh, town hall, and that's uh, designed. Uh, if somebody just wants to sit and have a discussion with somebody, it's designed to uh, to advertise that notion and, and essentially an invitation to have a chat. So that, that uh, funds a chat bench, five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Motion to refer to the budget and budget and finance committees.
Second? Counsel Chase, any discussion? See, and none move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
No.
Thank you, eight in favor, one against.
Okay, moving on, item E ordinance, D F Y twenty two dash zero one five, general ordinance and article section seven dash four districts of the town of Bridgewater home rolled charter by special act legislation. Uh, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to refer, you mean?
I, I apologize, motion, motion to refer to the rules and procedures.
Um, so move to move, so move to refer to rules and procedures.
Okay, do we have a second? Counsel Chase?
Okay.
Counsel Chase, do you have any discussion?
Um, no, Mr. President, thank you. I, I guess I would just say briefly that uh, the counselors are familiar with the um, the results of the workshop that we conducted a week ago. And um, I think that this is entirely consistent. What, what, what was the perceived to be the general consensus that arrived uh, through that, uh, I think very productive discussion. So um, I'm pleased to uh, uh, co-sponsor it, and um, I certainly look forward to um, uh, having it enacted.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? See, and none, uh, see, no roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Bodis?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
Okay, moving on, item, oh, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens wishing to speak uh, during citizens' comments? And Josh, if you could just help me out, if you see anyone, I'm scrolling through.
Sure, I don't see anyone with their hands up right now. I do see one now. Uh, Christopher Blunt.
Mr. Blunt, uh, name and uh, address, please.
Chris Blunt, Blueberry Knoll. So thank you, President, President Rushton, and good evening, councilors. So I'm appreciative that this item's not being taken for action tonight, and it's been referred out to committees. But I just wanted to share some thoughts and express my support for the resolution for the Oak, Oak Street Bridge Repair. So based on twenty twenty data from the Census's uh, geographic information sent uh, system, there's approximately nine census blocks consisting of five hundred and sixty five housing units that surround Oak Street from Wall Street intersection down the main. Excuse me. Also, based on census data from twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, the average household had two point six people. And so based on those five hundred and sixty five units, let's just say we had two people per household, which brings over eleven hundred residents not being able to safely utilize Oak Street on foot. Personally, my family and I enjoy walking uptown to frequent those establishments that we all enjoy. The ones that are s- still able to operate anyways. However, we've been able to, we, we've become more hesitant um, recently due to the amount of drivers that choose to use the street to bypass the downtown traffic and end up using it as a speedway. I know other residents are concerned that repairing the bridge will just increase the traffic and incidence of speeding. But I believe that this could be a good first step in improving the overall quality of Oak Street and a future goal of exploring sidewalk options. There's been a lot of discussion in this body about downtown revitalization. And with that come discussions of parking issues for the central business district. But what about those residents and families like mine that live within walking distance? So in concert with these improvement discussions, I ask you to also consider those residents that live within walking distance of downtown, but may not be able to do so safely. I ask you to consider those residents that can't safely walk their dogs out of their neighborhoods, those that want that have kids that want to safely ride their bikes with their friends. So I, I thank you for your time. I thank you for hearing my comments, and I thank you for your dedication to making Bridgewater a safer and more vibrant community.
Thank you, Mr. Blunt. Do we have any other citizens for citizens' comments?
I have Merrily.
Merrily?
Yes, thank you very, thank you very much. Um, I just have something quick to say. I agree on the precincting stuff. I won't, I won't dwell on that. You're doing a great job with it. Um, but in terms of what Mr. Blunt was saying, I want to comment on that because I also am a walker around town. I think people are pretty um, clear about that. And I'm, while I'm glad that we're improving uh, sidewalks on Broad and um, Main Street, those are by far not the most seriously impaired sidewalks in town. Um, I walk off and down Center Street. Those sidewalks are awful. There's sidewalks on only one side of the street, and that's a sidewalk that's used by kids who don't get busing and have to walk to either the Mitchell School or the high school. Um, there are many, many other streets where we don't have sidewalks on both sides of the streets and where it's very uh, dangerous to walk. High Street is another one. If you're coming, you're walking over High Street and you're going to go over the, the railroad viaduct or over the bridge there. You have to cross that street at least three times to stay on a sidewalk, three dangerous times when you can't see over the hill of what is, what's coming down the road. So I just encourage us, let's keep applying for, for complete streets grants. And let's get some of them, and let's really target some of the really um, really more dangerous and roads that really, really need to be upgraded for our citizens who are walkers and uh, who are heading to school, that sort of thing. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Do we have any other citizens for citizens' comments?
I did have Kathy B requesting to speak.
Okay. I don't see her on mine. What was the last name? Oh, Kathy B, uh, just straight B. Kathy, are you there?
This is Kathy Blaze. I'm from Conant Street. I would like to just understand a little bit more about the BP Regional School Project and um, understand the process and whether the town will have the opportunity to vote on the, um, the funding, and if so, when? And then also, if a vote is taken, would all the towns vote on the same date and how are the results determined? When we have multiple towns voting on funding?
Kathy, what was your last name?
Blaze.
Okay, if you could, just reach out to me by email on the town's website. Matt, Matthew Rushton, President Town Council. And, and I'll, I'll respond back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other citizens for citizens' comments? Okay, see, and then moving on to council comments. Counsel George?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to to say a, a, a big thank you to the residents of Bridgewater um, who endured a, a pretty long period of time being without power, obviously for, for a major storm. Um, I also want to say thank you to the crews that are still out there um, doing work from all over New England. I think we had a couple of crews from Canada. Um, working very, very hard uh, to get people up and running. Um, but as I said earlier today, what I want to have in the future for future discussion is National Grid. I'd like to see them come to one of our meetings and really explain in detail how they determine their, their, I'll say their tree um, maintenance programs specifically in Bridgewater. Cause even though uh, driving around, some of, some of the damage could not have been avoided just because seeing, you know, just ginormous uh, oak trees and other trees just uprooted. Um, I still think some of the some of the power outages may have been less severe if we had an ongoing comprehensive maintenance plan in Bridgewater. And, and I will say Bridgewater wasn't the only town that experienced uh, some pretty significant power outages for a period of time. So I think National Grid's probably going to get a lot of questions around proactive maintenance in order for us to try to avoid those situations going forward. Um, and lastly, I, I do appreciate any time that there are residents in need to see other residents um, just coming out of the woodwork, offering, you know, everything from a hot cup of coffee to a shower to charging phones and things of that nature for people that they may not necessarily know very well, but are open to that, which uh, makes me very proud of this community. So that being said, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel George. Counsel Gallagher?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'll just ditto what Counsel George said. I don't want to go on forever, but um, that was a pretty wild storm, and I think we ought to just brace ourselves that these are the types of things we're going to have to endure with going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gallagher. Counsel Perry?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President. I very suddenly just echo the sentiments. I think uh, all town services came together and helped deal with the effects of the storm as, as best as possible. Uh, I know I was affected personally both at home and work, not having power for a couple of days. Um, but uh, we, we, you know, we uh, we did the best we could. The town, you know, like I said, uh, police fire, uh, uh, highway department all came together. I know Main Street right near my office was blocked off uh, pretty much completely due to downed trees and lines, and they had it uh, cleared it out relatively quickly to get traffic flowing through there again. So uh, hats off to all those people involved and uh, hope we don't have to endure another one of those anytime soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Perry. Counsel Chase?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, I certainly echo those sentiments uh, with respect to the storm. Um, I did want to just make a, a quick advance mention of uh, the upcoming Veterans Day holiday and uh, was hoping that uh, I could just use this opportunity to further communicate news about the um, Tri-Town Veterans Day Parade, uh, which Bridgewater will host this year uh, to be conducted on Thursday, November eleventh at uh, nine forty-five. Um, I think it's a, a tremendous uh, event of the three town area, and it uh, certainly we are proud to host the event this year. And I think that uh, since we've largely been uh, as it were, out of the practice, you might say of uh, having a lot of large events due to the pandemic, it uh, it certainly would be a welcome event to see uh, you know, many faces uh, out to observe the parade and participate in the festivities. Um, Veterans Day, of course, is a, a solemn day. Uh, we take very seriously our uh, respect for veterans of all the armed services, and I think it's just one of the ways that we can help to show support for the armed services uh, in general by participating in community events like this. And that's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Counsel Chase. Counsel Souza?
Oh. Counselor Chase just beat me to the whole thing on the parade. So I, I'll have just echo his comments and say good evening.
Counsel, thank you, Counsel Souza. Counsel Moore?
Um, so just echoing what everyone else said, really appreciate all the support uh, during the storm. Maybe just two other quick comments on that. I, I also appreciated the video update from the town manager during the storm. I thought that was helpful to get that information out in front of residents. Also heard a lot of uh, questions and comments about how to handle uh, intersections when the stoplights go out. So I don't know if there's an, an opportunity for signs or education there, but. So I don't know if there's an, an opportunity for signs or education there, but seems like there might be a lesson learned around that. Um, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Moore, Council Wood.
Thank you. Um, uh, you know, we often don't appreciate our town attorney often enough, but, uh, uh, during the storm, I, some of my constituents thought I should be running, uh, the emergency central. Um, I left that to the professionals. Uh, I thought they did a pretty good job. Um, communication ended up being good. Uh, we all heard about internet being out and cell towers being out and that sort of thing, but, uh, that overall, as the day progressed, um, and, and the days progressed, you know, communication was, uh, it was a good capture. Um, let's see, someone covered the veterans play. You know, it's never too early to talk about Christmas on the common. And while I don't, you know, participate from the business side, I do participate from the lion's side. And we set up on the Thanksgiving, uh, on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, we set up all the decorations on the common. Many people think it's a, it's a town. Um, I don't know. It's a, it's a, it's a donation and service project by the Lions. And the reason I'm making this pitch for anyone that's, uh, listening to the recording or on Facebook is we're always looking for a few extra hands on the, uh, Saturday after Thanksgiving. Um, that stuff is not light. Uh, and, uh, we need some help getting the, uh, you, you know, getting the training place and getting some of the decorations up and that sort of thing. So if you reach out to me, uh, you know, my email's on, on the website, WD Wood, uh, Bridgewater, MA dot org. Um, I can set you up with some volunteer hours if you're a high school student or, uh, just appreciation if you're an adult. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Wood. I would only ask if that volunteering comes with a free appointment to Dr. Perry's office. Council Colin Bodas.
There is often, uh, yes.
Um, I'd just like to echo something, um, Mr. Blunt from Blueberry Knoll brought up about sidewalks. Um, it's interesting, we, you know, we're getting this four hundred thousand dollar grant from Complete Streets, which is a state program, which as it ne- as its name implies, um, advocates that this street, streetway and public transportation be available for all modes of transportation. It's a complete street. It's not just for cars, but also it should accommodate pedestrians. So I think it's a common pound nonsense as a town to um, to provide for multibles of transportation and not just for the automobile. Um, so I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Colin Bodas. Um, I would just, uh, like to add first throughout the storm, just wanted to thank, uh, the public safety chiefs, uh, being at home and listening on the radio. I know there's, uh, extraordinary hours that many of the officers worked. Uh, some were moving trees, uh, mixed in with power lines and other things going on. I know that the, uh, fire chief was down assisting, um, all of the residents at the housing authority and helping them. It's really just in an incredible town, uh, when things really get rough, like in this period that we had for several days of watching, you know, really all of the members of public safety really step up to help residents in all kinds of ways. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. But ironically, beyond the storm, uh, additionally, just acknowledge all department heads in town. Uh, certainly a credit to the town manager's office to the type of department leadership that we have. When you see orders coming through with grant money, um, this is exciting stuff. It, it's really important to the town, particularly the grant that we looked at tonight with the Department of Mental Health and our police offices responding to really sometimes volatile incidents and, and getting the training to help them deescalate the situation, not only for the citizen, but also to keep the police offices and firefighters safe. So I applaud them. Leadership from the top down, you know, it's obviously evident when you see things like this. So with that said, um, I'll move on and I will entertain a motion to move into an executive session, uh, under Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, little A, section two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to adjourn from executive session.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
And to, uh, move for a roll call vote?
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodas? Okay, thank you, eight in favor, zero against.
Josh, let me know when we're all set.